Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome you to the regularly scheduled meeting of the Apex Town Council. This is January 16th, 2018 meeting, and I'd like to call the meeting to order. At this time, if you would, please bow your heads in a word of invocation. While we thank you for this time to come together, we thank you that we have the ability and the privilege of serving the people of Apex. We pray your wisdom on our decision-making and your blessing on our conversations tonight. We pray that we will remember those who have fought for our freedoms. We will continue to honor and respect and take care of those who have worked for us. We pray now that you would give us your wisdom and guidance and be with us tonight. We pray these things in your holy name. Amen. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everyone, tonight. First, I'd like to recognize the sharp-dressed young gentleman here in the front two rows, and also, it looks like there's a leader with a larger version of that jersey on. Could you, if you don't mind, if you could stand up for a second, just identify your troop for us?
Yes, hi. We're the Weibo, second-year Weibo group from Act 224, formerly Two Tens combined to form the Foul-Valley Warriors.
That's great. And is there a particular patch that you hope some of these will earn tonight?
This is a requirement to learn more about civic governance. It's part of a larger patch, okay? Building a better world.
Great. Very nice. Glad you're all here tonight. We'll try to walk the fine line between being entertaining and getting work done. All right? If you have recently come in, I hope you were able to see on the podium outside our pre-printed agenda. It looks like this. If you missed it, feel free to go get it. I don't mind if you get up and walk back and get one. This will be our agenda for the night. In addition, if you intend to speak tonight during either a public forum or public hearing time, there is a yellow sheet that has the guidelines and the policies. Please familiarize yourself with those. At the same time, do know that we ask for each person who intends to speak to sign the appropriate yellow sheet depending on which item you wish to speak on tonight. So if you have not signed and you intend to speak, please feel free to come up and do so now. We now move into the time of presentations, and our presentation first tonight will be initially, Stacy, will you introduce our speaker? But I believe we have some survey results from the community of Apex.
All right. Well, the results are in for our first ever that we know of community satisfaction survey. We vetted three different national firms a few months ago and wound up with ETC Institute. They came the most highly recommended from their references. They've also done a lot of survey work in North Carolina, Inwick County, Raleigh, Durham, High Point, and Wilmington, so they know the area. They have a lot of great benchmarking data they can share with us. So I'll turn it over to Jason Morado, who is our rep from ETC.
Thank you. It's great to be here in Apex today. My name is Jason Morado. I'm a senior project manager at ETC Institute. And ETC is a marketing research firm based in Alatha, Kansas, which is a suburb of the Kansas City area. And the thing that we specialize in is doing community surveys for local governments all across the country. And this past November and December, for the first time, we administered a citizen satisfaction survey for the town of Apex. So today, I'm going to go through the major findings from that survey. I do have just one slide about ETC Institute. We're based in the Kansas City area, but we're a national leader in providing market research for local governments. As Stacy said, we've done a lot of work in North Carolina, and some of our regular clients include the city of Durham, Durham County, Raleigh, High Point, and Fayetteville. So this is really the type of work that we specialize in. So today, I'll go through the purpose and methodology of the survey. What I call the bottom line up front is really our main conclusions from the survey. I'll go through some of the major survey findings to show how we came to those conclusions, and then if there's any questions, I'll be happy to answer those as well. So there's several reasons to do a survey like this. One is to objectively assess what residents think about town services, and also help determine what their priorities are for the community. Also, this survey will hopefully set a baseline for future surveys. A lot of our clients do surveys every two to three years. And then also with this survey, we're able to compare Apex's performance with other communities on both a regional and a national basis. So this survey was seven pages long, and that's a very typical length for one of our citizen satisfaction surveys. The survey was administered by a combination of mail and online to randomly selected households all throughout the town, and that's our standard survey methodology. Our goal is to get at least 400 completed surveys, and we had a really, really good response. Actually, ended up with 554 completed surveys. And one thing we always do when we administer community surveys is as we're collecting the data, we check the demographics of survey respondents to make sure they reflect the actual population of the area. So we had a really good distribution here as far as age, gender, race, and ethnicity. And the results of these 554 surveys, at the 95% level of competence, has a margin of error of plus or minus 4.1%. So essentially, that means if we did this survey the same way 100 times, the results would be plus or minus 4.1% from what we're reporting. So of course, there's always some margin of error when you do these surveys, but really it's a very, very small margin. So here you can see, we have a map of the town. The red dots are households that completed the survey. So we had a really good distribution throughout the town. In generally areas that are more densely populated have more red dots, and then the areas without completed surveys are really non-residential areas. So here's our main conclusions from the survey, what we call the bottom line up front. We found that residents have a very, very positive perception of the town, and one of the reasons we say that is that over 90% of residents rate the town as either an excellent or a good place to live and to raise children, and less than 2% give a rating of below-average or poor. So really, that's one of the highest ratings of anywhere across the country where we do these surveys. Another one of the areas that really stands out is that 90% of residents are satisfied with the overall quality of town services, and less than 1% are dissatisfied. And that's probably the most important question on this survey, because here we're asking people to take into account everything that the town provides and really give an overall satisfaction rating for the town. And each year when we do these surveys all across the country, there's usually only a handful of communities that have reached a 90% satisfaction level for the overall quality of town services. So that's also one of the very, very best ratings anywhere across the country. And that kind of leads into my next key finding, which says that the satisfaction with town services is much higher in Apex than it is in other communities. We'll look at this in more detail in a little bit. We're rated above other communities in 53 out of the 55 areas that we compared, and in most cases, much, much higher, not just 1%, 2%, or 3%. And a couple of the areas that I especially wanted to point out, one is the overall quality of town services, which I just mentioned. You're rated about 40 points above the U.S. and the regional average. And then another area that really stood out is overall customer service from town employees. That was also one of the highest-rated items of anywhere in the survey, and you're rated more than 40 points above the U.S. average. And then also, we found the top opportunities for improvements that will have the most positive impact on overall satisfaction over the next few years is management and planning of growth and development, and then management of traffic. And then the strategic goals that residents rated as the most important are having a safe and secure community and sustainable development and infrastructure. So the first area we'll look at are just some general perceptions of the town. So we asked residents to rate the quality of life in the town of Apex, and these questions are asked on a five-point scale. So the dark blue are residents who rated each item as excellent, the light blue is good, the white is neutral, or in other words, averages, that's a rating of a three on a five-point scale. So that's not bad, but really means meeting expectations. And then the red are ratings of one or two, which is below-average or poor. So overall, you can see the positive ratings far away the negative in all these areas. And a couple of areas that especially stand out are those top two rows. You can see just about everybody we surveyed rates the town as either an excellent or a good place to live and to raise children. You've got just the tiniest red bar, which is less than 2%. We also asked residents to rate their perceptions of the town in a number of different areas. Once again, the positives far away the negatives. And there's a couple of areas I want to point out here. One is that top row, which again is the overall quality of town services. You can see 90% of residents are either very satisfied or satisfied, less than 1% dissatisfied. And then the other key finding here is that bottom row, overall value received for town tax dollars. So you can see that 74% are either very satisfied or satisfied, and that might not seem good compared to the rest of this chart, but that really is one of the highest numbers anywhere in the country. Every year when we do this survey, there's only a handful of communities that reach a 70% satisfaction label with value for tax dollars. Then we also asked about major categories of city services. Here, we're asking residents to take a big-picture view and rate each of these areas at the departmental level, and then later on in the survey, they rate some more specific areas within some of these categories. So you can see for most of these areas, there's very, very high satisfaction ratings, very few areas where residents are dissatisfied. The only areas that stand out as having high levels of dissatisfaction are management of traffic, and then the management and planning of growth and development. And then we also asked residents how safe they feel in the town in a number of different situations. You can see people feel safe pretty much in all situations, and it's one thing for the feeling of safety to be high in your neighborhood during the day, but what's especially impressive is how safe residents feel in their neighborhood at night. Almost 90% feel safe in their neighborhood at night, and you can see only 3% say they don't feel safe. So now we'll look at some benchmarking comparisons to see how you compare to residents in other communities across the country, and the results are extremely positive. The blue bar here are Apex residents who are either very satisfied or satisfied. The red are the satisfaction ratings from residents in the Atlantic region, which includes North Carolina and a few surrounding states. And then the yellow are the satisfaction ratings from residents from all across the U.S. So this is for the major categories of city services. You can see in most of these areas, you rate much higher than other communities. That includes police, fire, and ambulance services, parks and recreation facilities, customer service from city employees, town employees. And this area especially is one of the highest-rated items in the list. You can see you're rated about 40 points above both the regional and the national average, which is one of the highest numbers anywhere across the country. You also rate much higher than other communities in parks and recreation programs, codes and ordinances, communication with the public, and then maintaining streets and sidewalks. And there are the two areas that do rate lower than other communities, which is management of traffic, and then the management and planning of growth and development. So then we also did some comparisons for perceptions of the community. All five of these areas, much higher than our benchmarking averages. The two that especially stand out are, one at the very top, overall quality of town services. I mentioned that a couple of times already, but you can see 90% satisfaction rating, one of the highest numbers in the country. And then the other one that really stands out is that bottom row, value received for town tax dollars, 74% satisfaction rating. You can see the regional and national average is just under 40%. And for quality of life in the town, you can see the ratings as a place to live and a place to raise children are much higher than other communities, both at right around 95%. And then the town is a place to work is a little above other communities, but pretty close to on par. For town leadership, all three of these areas, you can see are more than 20 points above the regional and national average. Quality of leadership by town-elected officials, also the effectiveness of the town manager and appointed staff. We also did some comparisons for emergency services. All of these areas rate above the benchmarking averages, and most of them significantly higher. Couple I wanted to point out here are how quickly police respond to emergencies. You can see that's more than 20 points above the regional and national average. And then if you go down the list about halfway down, efforts to prevent crime is also about 20 points above the regional and national average. Here's some comparisons for maintenance. All eight of these areas, much, much higher than other communities. And if you look at that top row, maintenance of downtown, this is one of the highest ratings that we've seen anywhere in the country for maintenance of downtown. 88% are either very satisfied or satisfied. And then other areas that really stand out as being much, much higher than other communities are the cleanliness of streets and public areas, mowing and trimming along streets and other public areas, and overall maintenance of streets. We also did some comparisons for solid waste collection. All three areas, trash, recycling, and yard waste, you can see are much higher than other communities. Code enforcement, again, all five of these are also much, much higher than our benchmarking And then for parks and recreation, four out of these six are much, much higher. There are a couple that are just a little bit above other communities, number of walking and biking trails and adult programs. Still rate higher than our benchmarking averages, but not as far above as some of these other And then for customer service, we saw a piece chart ago that the overall quality of customer service rated significantly higher than other communities. Well, here we asked about some specific areas of customer service, and all five of them received very high ratings. And this is based just on people who have actually contacted the city in the past year, which was just a little over 40% of survey respondents. So town employees are doing a great job, being courteous and polite, they're easy to contact, did what they said they would in a timely manner, gave prompt, accurate, and complete answers to questions. And then probably the most important area, helped resolve issues to resident satisfaction. So now we'll take a look at what are some of the top priorities for the community. And this is what we call our important satisfaction rating, and this tool is really a great way to help communities set priorities. So this analysis is based on two different questions. First, we asked residents how satisfied they are with town services. And then the follow-up question is, which of these services should be the highest priority for the town to focus on? So the idea behind this is that those areas that have a combination of a low satisfaction rating, but also ones that people think are the most important, should be the highest priorities. So based on that, this is for the major categories of services. There's two areas that clearly stand out as by far the highest priorities, management and planning of growth and development, and then management of traffic. Residents rate those as by far the two most important items, and then they ranked eighth and ninth in satisfaction. And then another high priority is maintaining streets and sidewalks, but definitely there's a gap between that and those top two. We also did this type of analysis specifically for emergency services. Here, there's a couple of areas that stand out above the rest as being higher priorities, visibility of police in neighborhoods, and then efforts to prevent crime. Now, efforts to prevent crime had a really high satisfaction rating, but it's still something that residents always rate as being very important, which is why it ended up high on this list. And then we also did this type of analysis for maintenance. Here, there's two areas that stand out, adequacy of street lighting, and then the overall maintenance of town streets. Now, the overall maintenance of town streets also had a really high satisfaction rating. That's another area that residents always rate as being very important, even if they're already satisfied with it. So this is a couple of other charts with some other various survey findings. We asked residents which of these strategic goals are the most important, and by far, the item they're rated as the most important was having a safe and secure community. And then the clear number two was sustainable development and infrastructure. We also asked residents how they rate the town's efforts to provide information about programs, services, and events. Most people gave really good ratings. 75% said excellent or good, only 5% said poor. And then we asked residents to rate the town's current pace of development. So on this chart, the yellow means people think the current pace of development is about right. The green means it's not enough, there should be more of it. And then the pink, purplish color means there's too much. So you can see a good percentage of residents think the current pace of development for office and industrial is about right. For retail, there's about an equal mix of those who feel it's about right versus those who feel like there should be more. And then you can see the bottom two, a good majority of residents feel like there's too much development of residential, and that includes both single-family and multifamily. So then just a quick recap, we saw that residents have an extremely positive perception of the town. The items I listed here are a couple of the highest in the country. Most are satisfied with the town as a place to live and to raise children. Also, 90% satisfied with the overall quality of town services. He also rated much higher than other communities in just about every area that we compared. And the areas that really I think are the most notable are overall quality of town services, customer service from town employees. And then it's not listed here, but overall value for tax dollars also rated very, very high. The top opportunities for improvement are management and planning of growth and development, and then management of traffic. And the strategic goals that residents rated as the most important are having a safe and secure community and sustainable development and infrastructure. So of course, there's always room for improvement, but obviously, overall, the results are incredibly positive, really in just about every area, especially some of those really key areas that we look at. So with that, does anyone have any questions or comments?
Can we get a copy of this presentation?
I think we already have it.
Sure. Do we have it? Do we have it?
Mr. Town Manager might want to address that, but I think he...
You have the entire draft survey report in your inbox. I sent it Friday afternoon and looked at my outbox today and realized that it did not go, so you now have it, though.
Okay, thank you.
It's also here.
The slides are in the agenda packet, but then you've got the whole detailed report available to you.
You said that was a draft? It's not the final report yet?
It's still labeled as draft, maybe Ms. Galway or...
It is a draft. There's just a few changes we have to make. The maps came after the draft report was finalized. We have a couple of maps to add and a couple of very minor changes, so it's a draft, but it's very close to the final report.
Mr. Morado, how much easier is your job when you get to give such amazing results to towns like this?
It's definitely much easier, that's for sure. Much, much easier.
Yeah, I'm actually looking forward to being able to use this at our workshop, to be able to consider the input from citizens and setting priorities. So I think this is some very good information, gives us some raw data to work from. Thank you very much. Anything else from council?
I guess I, I'm not sure the analysis is completed, but totally, but if it's not, I was interested in the, because you've got a large sample size, I was interested in the, if there's any spatial diversity in the responses, if certain parts of town tend to be a little bit higher or lower than the average of the town.
Yeah, we did create some maps, and none of those were in the presentation, but it's a separate appendix to the main report where we broke the results down by census block group, especially for all those questions asked on a five-point scale. So yeah, that's really interesting and does show if there are differences in different parts of the town.
And all of that will come in a very large file.
All right. Thank you very much, Mr. Morado.
Great, thank you.
At this time, we move to consent agenda, and in consent agenda, item number six needs to be removed. We're not going to discuss it tonight, it is simply being removed. So if you don't mind, please scratch that one out. And as I introduced that, consent agenda is a list of items that we consider to be routine, and those routine items typically are non-controversial, so we often enact all of them with one single motion. Also, if any council member wishes to pull one to discuss later, they certainly can do so. With that, I'd like to ask the council if there is a motion to approve the consent agenda with number six removed.
So moved.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent without number six. Any discussion on the motion? All right, not hearing any, I'll call for the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, consent agenda is approved, and we now move to setting the regular agenda. This is on page three, if you have your sheet with you. This is where we set the agenda for the items tonight, with one minor exception. I think the agenda is sound. Councilmember Killingsworth has requested to give a small report in the new business section. All right, and if there's no objection from council, we'll make that new business number one. All right, and if there is nothing else, then I'll call for a motion to approve the agenda with that one modification.
Motion to approve.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve with the one modification for councilmember Killingsworth. Yes, Mr. Town Manager?
So the public forum piece.
You just changed your role, so we need to...
Good point. So thank you very much for pointing that out. Tonight, in one of our consent items, we have modified our public forum policy to have public forum at the beginning of each regularly scheduled meeting. So since that happens now, if the council wishes, we can add that to tonight's agenda since that would be the next item. Is there any objection from that?
No objection.
All right, so we'll also include that, so that will be two modifications to the printed agenda. And if there's nothing else, thank you, Mr. Town Manager, if there's nothing else, I'll call for a motion.
Motion to approve with changes.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve with the changes. Any discussion on the motion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no. All right, that motion passes unanimously. We now move to public forum, and public forum is a time for council to hear from you, the citizen, and if you have something you wish to share with us tonight, this is your chance. I see we have one person who has signed up, Jessie Mistrick McNair. Where are you, Jessie? Look, there she comes. She's, we need music for this. And just before we start, Ms. McNair, I want to remind everyone just a couple of things. One, during public forum, we have a three-minute timer, so you'll see the red, yellow, green lights, although they'll go in the reverse order. So when you see yellow, rap it if you haven't already. And the other thing is, please state your name and address for the record.
Okay. Jessie Mistrick McNair, 6305 1010 Road, Apex, North Carolina, 27539.
All right, please continue.
Did you know that cervical cancer was once one of the most common causes of cancer death for women in the United States? According to the American Cancer Society, this rate dropped by 50% in the past 40 years because of the increased use of cervical cancer screening tests. I'm living proof of the positive impact of these tests, and after nine years of such screenings, my doctor was able to catch and remove high-grade precancerous cells. I'm considered lucky. At the age of 23, I was encouraged by a loved one to take the necessary precautions to prevent cervical cancer. Not everyone has that friend, and not everyone knows how important these screenings really are. Good evening, my name is Jessie Mistrick McNair, and I'm Mrs. Apex International 2018, and I'll be competing for the title of Mrs. North Carolina International in April. The international pageant system emphasizes the importance of service not only to our direct communities, but the world. We strive to use our crown and sash to better those around us. My passion is to bring awareness of cervical cancer prevention through screenings to the world, and my world begins here in Apex. January is recognized as Cervical Cancer Awareness Month worldwide. As you may know, Governor Roy Cooper recently declared January 2018 to be Cervical Cancer Awareness Month in North Carolina. Here in Apex, I'm hosting various events, speaking engagements, social media campaigns, and fundraisers for the cause through the month and beyond as part of my platform, Talk Teal, spotlighting cervical cancer worldwide. My mission is to initiate cervical cancer conversations and empower women to make preventative lifestyle choices. The disease of cervical cancer makes an impact on our immediate community every day. Just ask Kate Brown. A wife, mother, and Apex resident who was diagnosed on January 12th of 2016 with stage two carcinoma caused by HPV. She's been cancer-free since July 20th of 2016. My hope, and the hope of Kate and her fellow survivors, is that by recognizing this issue on a public scale, we will save lives. Someone will see our message and decide to schedule their screening. The screening that, for many, will be the one that identifies precancerous cells before it becomes invasive cancer. I ask that the Apex Town Council please consider taking this stand with me, and I thank you in advance for your support.
Thank you, Mrs. McNair. All right, that concludes our public forum, having reached the end of the list. So I will now move us to the time of public hearing. We now start with public hearings number one and two. We will hear them together since they are a joint annexation and rezoning. As a reminder, we don't want to annex property unless we intend to rezone it, and we certainly don't want to, we certainly want to consider the rezoning before we annex. So with that said, we'll hear both of these together, public hearings one and two, and presenting tonight is Shelley Mayo. Ms. Mayo?
Good evening. As you said...
As you said, this is a small parcel. This particular project that you're looking at is a rezoning petition located off of Garrus Road, just south of US-1, out near New Hill-Hallman Road. This area should seem kind of familiar, because we've had two other rezonings within the last three or four months, also in this area. The parcel in question is about .41 acres in size. It's currently zoned Wake County R-30, and the applicant is requesting that it be rezoned to medium-density conditional zoning. This is the existing zoning district map. Oh, there we go. And this is what the applicant would like to see. As you can see, to the south here, there are a couple different properties that have already been rezoned medium-density conditional zoning. This particular district is compliant with the town's 2030 land use map. The site currently consists of an area that's primarily wooded. It's located to the east of the Western Wake County wastewater reclamation facility, which is a tongue-twister. The applicant conducted two neighborhood meetings. The first was done on October 23rd, no one attended. The second was held December 21st, because four neighbors were accidentally missed on the original mailing. Three people did attend the second meeting, and both neighborhood meeting reports are attached to your staff report. The rezoned lands are being proposed for the following uses: single-family, duplex, utility minor, greenway, park-active, park-passive, accessory apartment, and family care home. There are 10 proposed conditions listed below that in your staff report. These conditions are identical to the conditions that were approved with the other two rezonings that we talked about, the ones that are shown here to the south. Planning staff recommends approval to the proposed rezoning as submitted. The planning board heard this proposal on their January 8th meeting, and they also recommended approval unanimously. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them. The applicant's also here and happy to answer any questions for you.
All right, thank you. Any questions for Ms. Mayo before we-
I do have one.
Okay.
I'm scrolling through all these pages, and I can't quickly locate those 10 conditions. Do you mind telling me what those 10 conditions are that match?
Sure. They should be within the first two or three sheets of your staff report, so if you go all the way up to the top.
Public hearing number two, just where the rezoning conditions-
Yeah, sorry about that confusion, because there's both the annexation and the other. But it's essentially vinyl siding is not permitted, however vinyl windows, decorative elements, and trim are permitted. All single-family homes shall have a crawl space or raised foundation, which at minimum rises 12 inches from the finished floor level. Garage doors must have windows, decorative details, and carriage-style adornments on them. The roof shall be pitched at 512 or greater. The eaves shall project at least 12 inches from the wall of the structure. The visible side of the home on a corner-facing lot facing the public street shall contain at least three decorative elements, such as, but not limited to, and then we have a list of those types of elements. A varied color palette shall be used on homes throughout the subdivision to include a minimum of three color families. House entrances for units with front-facing, single-car garages shall have prominent covered porch or stoop area leading to the front door. The garage cannot protrude more than two feet out from the front porch or front facade, and homes will be pre-wired for solar panels.
Would you say the intent was with this property to put a single-family home on it?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I had a question along with what Wes's question was, I think, to a degree. This is, I read it's for a single-family home, future single-family home-
Yes, sir.
-but where they wanted to rezonate to medium-density, which means you could actually put two-
In order to be compliant with the 2030 land use map, they actually were required to zone it as either medium-density or as a PUD. Rezoning a single parcel that's .41 acres to a PUD is unwieldy and unnecessary, so this was the easier of the two options.
When I looked at the conditions, though, it didn't say for only a single-family home.
That's correct. The applicant did discuss the potential of possibly being able to put two houses out here. The way the lot's currently set up, it would take a very talented surveyor to be able to make the minimum frontage that's required by the UDO work. I looked at it myself, and I couldn't really find a way to make that work, so there is a minimum 50-foot-wide requirement for each lot in a medium-density residential, and I think this lot is something like 94 feet wide, or something along those lines.
I guess I'm still surprised that he just didn't put in there for one, one, one single-family home.
When I discussed it with him, he wanted to leave that open as an option in case he could get more property, but he is here to answer that question, if you'd like.
Remind me what's next door to these? Is it single-family homes on the size of lots?
Primarily, yes, sir. There's three lots here that have single-family houses on them, one here to the rear, and then there's a couple of larger parcels to the rear here that also have single-family homes on them. And then this area is a church, and then there's a few other houses that are either approximately the same size lots or a little bit larger.
I hate to see a neighborhood that has fairly sizable lots, and then, I understand what you're saying, it'd be difficult to do, but-
I understand.
Nothing's impossible sometimes.
There's, I can't address it any further, other than to just tell you that he told me his intent was to just do one, but he was looking at other options.
Is there tonight?
Yes, yes, sir.
So connected to that, I understood it was either going to be a single-family home or a duplex, which could be two units but in one building, and that's how I understood it. Is that-
That's one of the options that we discussed, yes, ma'am. And that would be the best way to get two units without having to divide up the parcel. It'd be the best way for the parcel to work, to get two units.
Shelley, I seem to remember the development that came into the south of this, even though it's zoned medium-density, did we put a condition that was three units an acre or less?
Not to my recollection. The conditions that are in front of you for this were taken directly from what was approved for those. I don't think that they were able to fit more than three units an acre, but that subdivision's currently under review, and I don't have that in front of me at the moment.
So it's zoned medium-density, but the proposal of the neighborhood is you're thinking three or less?
I recall, but I don't have it in front of me, so I don't want to say definitively. I don't want to accidentally give you incorrect information.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, Shelley. Does the applicant wish to speak? If you wish, you're welcome to.
It's not internet, do I-
Well, we can after the fact, but feel free, Mr. Levert, I presume?
Yeah, how's everybody doing? My plan is I'm going to build a single-family home on it. You know what I mean? Water and sewer are right there in the front. That's why I'm annexing rezoning to hook up to it. But it is, it is going to be a single-family home.
All right, thank you. If you want to hang on a second, we might have some questions for you.
Can you put that in the conditions, Venus? That's all you intend to do?
Yeah, that's not a problem. I don't have enough room, like she said, it's going to take up-
So not a duplex?
Could have a duplex, I-
I'm going to put a single-family home.
So, can we take that as a condition, Mr. Levert?
Yeah, I'm going to start on it right away, so.
All right, all right, so with the condition of a single home.
All right.
Single-family home.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Mr. Levert?
Can I just ask for clarification?
Yes.
That means one single, single-family home.
Right.
Right.
That's what I heard.
That's the game plan. All right, thanks a lot.
All right, before you leave, Mr. Levert, let me go ahead and get you to sign here. Just sign yourself in. Just so we can get your name and address, right? All right. Thank you, Mr. Levert. And not having anyone else have signed up for the public hearing, I will open the public hearing and then summarily close it. Thank you. And refer the matter to council for possible motion.
Motion to approve of the condition of single-family.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve, and to be clear, we're doing a annexation and a rezoning, so I'd like to make sure the motion is for annexation and rezoning. All right, with the condition for a single, single-family home. Okay? Any discussion on the motion? All right, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, that passes unanimously. Thank you very much for coming out, Mr. Levert. We now move to public hearing number three. Public hearing number three is possible rezoning number 17 CZ-26 by late-time development at Apex Barbecue Road, about seven acres, and Liz Lofton is presenting.
Good evening. So this is a land use map amendment and rezoning case 17 CZ-26 at 7124 and 0 Apex Barbecue Road. The properties to be rezoned are located on the north side of Apex Barbecue Road. The original Belacasa subdivision is to the north and west. Crockett's Ridge subdivision is to the south, and Apex Nature Park is located here. The site consists of two parcels. One property has one existing single-family home, and the other property contains accessory structures and fenced-in areas that were used for horses. The current 2030 land use map classifies the subject property as medium-density residential. The applicant is proposing an amendment to the 2030 land use map to low-density residential. Approving the land use map amendment is in keeping with the low-density designation of the properties to the north and west. The current property is currently zoned rural residential. The applicant is proposing to rezonate to low-density conditional zoning. The applicant conducted a neighborhood meeting on October 19th, and a copy of the neighborhood meeting report is included in the staff report. A full list of the proposed uses and zoning conditions are included on page two of the staff report. The zoning conditions are consistent with the standard residential zoning conditions and include vinyl siding is not permitted, all single-family homes shall have a crawl space or raised foundation, a varied color palette shall be utilized throughout the subdivision, the visible side of the home on a corner lot facing the public street shall contain at least three decorative elements, front porches shall be a minimum of six feet deep, the maximum density is 2.5 units per acre, all single-family homes shall include conduit for future installation of solar power generating equipment and associated wiring. Planning staff can recommend approval with the conditions as proposed. The proposed rezoning will be in keeping with the surrounding residential development to the north and west, and will limit the density to 2.5 units per acre. The planning board held a new, a public hearing on January 8th, and unanimously recommended approval of the land use map amendment and rezoning. Now I'm here to answer any questions that you have.
Questions?
I sent, as you know, I sent a list of questions that I have. I can ask those of the developer, if he's here, if that's easier.
Yes, he is also here.
You're off the hook.
All right, let's, let's put a pin in that, and let's see if there's any other council members that have questions for staff. That's all right?
That's fine.
All right.
What'd you say the total acreage of this site was?
It's 6.89 acres.
6.89, and you said it was 2.5 units per acre?
Yes, that's what the condition is.
And I saw that there are some questions in the neighborhood meeting about the road connection, and it was advised not to because of the size of development as is, but, so if it extends further in different direction, is there going to be a certain requirement for a road at that point?
A second point of connection would be required when it reached 50 lots.
50 lots, okay.
The current Belacasa in the proposal would be under 50 lots.
So is the intent to make a cul-de-sac in there?
So, we currently have a master subdivision under review. There would be a cul-de-sac with a stub to the east.
So stub to the east, if you're thinking about-
Here.
Okay, but not back to barbecue? No connection back to barbecue?
No.
Okay, because it'd be under 50 units?
It's under 50 units, and there's also minimum distance requirements between the road, the intersection here.
Okay. Anything else for staff? All right, thank you, Liz. And this time, I'll ask the applicant if he wishes, he or she wishes to say something.
Sean Smith, 1138 Bexley Hills Bend, Apex, North Carolina, 27502. I have a couple things I'll go over, and then I know Bill had a couple questions. First of all, thank you to the town staff. They've been phenomenal to work with on this project. They've been very diligent in helping us keep timelines, review cycles down. Have felt definitely a lot of confidence with the staff in moving through this one. Thank you, guys, as always, and thank you for those of you who took the time to meet with me, and that we actually had time to meet with as well, prior to this meeting. I think it definitely helps all of us as we move through these projects. Couple things that I wanted to point out, as Liz stated, we have a 30-foot thoroughfare buffer along the front of the property, a type B 10-foot buffer along the rest of the perimeter buffer. There's a 30-foot RCA buffer along the southeast quadrant. I think what's more important is really our intent is to kind of make this seamless with the existing Belacasa. I've actually reached out to the same landscape architect that did the berm in landscaping along that front, and we'd like to continue her exact same design down the rest of our project as well. It's gorgeous as it is, one of my favorite communities in town. We are currently proposing a wet pond. I think there was some discussion of whether we were doing a wet pond or dry pond. We are doing a wet pond. It does currently meet the 10-year stormwater event. We are going to research our 25, see what those impacts are, and see if we can include it into our plan as we get into our CDs. As Liz stated, our, you know, requested rezoning to low-density allows for up to three units per acre. We're only proposing 2.5. Our 2030 land use plan currently shows this property as medium. We are actually reducing that into low-density instead of trying to take advantage of something that would allow us to do town homes or other high-density type options, which I feel would be less desirable for the, you know, the residents around this area. Furthering our extent to really continue the, I guess, the look and feel and continuation of Belacasa Phase 1, we've actually been in contact with Omega Management, who's managing that HOA, and per their instruction, we have our attorney currently working on an amendment to allow us to adjoin their HOA, and then a sub-association of covenants and restrictions that we would have privately, because we have our own BMP, and we need to have our own, our own association as well. I know, Bill, you had some questions.
Feel free-
Okay, thank you. Yeah, and you hit, you hit most of them, some of them, thank you. I'm glad, I'm glad you're looking into the 25-year pond. There was one question, and I think you kind of touched on it, along Apex Barbecue Road, there's a B buffer.
Yes.
And we did a B buffer because, as a requirement, in case there was trees there and stuff like that, you don't want to tear them out-
Right.
-and then plant it to an A buffer. But there is an area there. Will you be trying to plant that towards the higher density, you know, where the horse grazing area is?
Yes, it's very bare on the west side. We're going to actually, literally the berm that sits in front of Belacasa, we're just going to extend that all the way down.
And then at least to a B?
To the same, literally the same planings as what they did next door. I don't know what that would be classified as, but it's pretty extensive.
To the B?
It's a very heavy, heavy, heavy buffer. It's nice.
Okay.
They did a good job with it.
Okay. The solar wiring, I'm really glad you're doing that, but we did talk about possibility of installing one solar PV system as a demonstration on one of the houses. You got, I think you're going to be putting 17 houses in, or something like that?
14 is the current plan, yes, sir.
14, 14. Okay. Can you range for that?
Yes, I mean, obviously, we're just the developer. We're not, we're not a developer and builder, but I've already had some text exchange with the builder since you and I talked, and we'll certainly push to make that happen, at least on one of the homes.
You will?
Yes, sir.
You will commit to that?
Yes, sir. We'll make it happen.
Pardon me?
We'll make it happen. We'll make it happen.
Okay, good. And LED lights, we talked briefly about that. I know you're not the builder.
Yes.
But builders can sell their houses as more environmentally friendly, and certainly LED lights last longer than the compact fluorescent, I've learned that.
They do.
They lied to us about compact, compact fluorescents, by the way. So can you push that with your developers?
We can certainly make a recommendation as well.
Okay, and insulated garage doors likewise?
Yes, sir.
All right, can you, I just want a clarification. What kind of garage doors?
Insulated.
Oh, insulated, okay, thank you. Yep, I just didn't hear.
No, I'm glad, I'm glad, 'cause sometimes I say things wrong.
No, I just didn't hear the word. Sorry.
I'll try to see better. And then three-pane windows possibly look at. I know this area doesn't require them, but certainly up north they do, and, and we're gonna make, as you well know, sustainable developments as we move along.
Right.
If you can work that with your developers.
Right. We'll, we'll certainly have those discussions with yours.
All right, thank you.
I have a few questions.
Yes, I'm cool.
Based on some of the folks who attended the neighborhood meeting, and had been corresponding with you since then, do you feel like some of those concerns have been addressed?
Um, I believe some of them have. I mean, some of them, like, connecting back to Apex Barbecue Road were not things that we could, you know, that we could accomplish.
All right, so if there's others that are, that were here tonight, I'd like, I'd love for you to see if you're willing to.
Absolutely.
To address those this evening.
Certainly.
And then related to the wooden nature of this lot, if this passes, are you going to try to preserve and do as much as you can to minimize the environmental impact?
Yes, so, and very much like my last project that I did here in Apex, Abbey Run, we only intend to clear the right-ofways. So, you know, as we've already discussed, the western side of this property does not have a whole lot of trees, but literally anything else that's not within the right-ofways we'll keep. And then builders will be able to select cut to fit their homes. It's definitely a different style of development than what we're used to with the clear-cutting of everything. It just feels a lot better.
All right, anything else for Mr. Smith? What is your actual real name? Just kidding.
What did you say, the, the buffer between the existing, I guess cul-de-sac, but it's gonna back up to the new cul-de-sac, 10-foot?
Mm-hmm, it is. It's also a combined RCA, so I mean, what, that buffer that's there, we're not gonna go in and touch it. The only thing we'll do is add to, supplement it if we need to. It's a pretty heavy buffer, so I honestly, I feel that there's gonna be a little, very little supplementation.
Okay, good. Okay. What's your average lot size that you're putting in here?
Um, let me see, sorry. I'd rather give you an exact number. The average is 12,00136.
Recently, some of folks have said, you know, could, could people use like words that we understand, like, so people understand third of, third of an acre and quarter of an acre more so than, and they said, would you mind doing that? And I wanna, to see if we can make sure that people understand.
Yes, I can do it correctly. .278.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, councilman.
You made me do math on, under pressure.
Yeah.
That was intense.
That was funny.
I have just one more quick one, and it just get into the books, and that is.
Yes, sir.
When, when residential developers are doing these residents, one of the things that would be really helpful for Apex is to have some sort of a consortium of all the residential developers so that we can get non-residential buildings up here that will provide opportunities for businesses that provide real jobs. And I noticed on the presentation that was done earlier tonight, that was one of the high-order things, it seems, or one of the things that people were not that happy with, that they don't have real jobs in Apex.
Right.
So I just would like to think that maybe, I know you're a small developer right now, but I know you're gonna be big someday.
Thank you.
If you could think about that, and maybe talk to your development community about that at every opportunity. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith. With that, with that, I'd like to open the public hearing, and referring to the sheet, I have two people who've signed up. Roberto Vila, please come forward, and Terry Mahaffey will be next.
So I'm representing a few, 14 people, so if I could have just another minute or so, I think I'll have four minutes or so.
All right, pause one second. Is there one here that Mr. Vila is representing? Please raise your hand. All right, very, very well. Mr. Vila is representing four or more people, you have nine minutes.
I, I thought it was four, so that's.
Yes, sir.
What I enforced, so.
Well, you certainly can stop at four if you choose.
No, I can just tell you about my day for another five minutes. So, my name's Robert Vila, and I live at 213 Franconia Way. I'm a resident of the original Belacasa development, and I'm here to represent the 28 families in Belacasa, including the 14 people who are here today, many of which you felt so strongly they came out here with children and hired babysitters and things like that. And we're asking you to vote no on this proposal as currently constructed. So let me tell you about our community, get you a feel for, for how it exists today. We're a tight-knit group of neighbors, that we host Halloween parties, Christmas parties, Super Bowl parties together, kids play together in the street and in the front yards. And this is why my wife and I bought the house that we did. My wife, who's with me tonight, is pregnant, and we've been dreaming about when our son will be able to play on this street, with the kids on the street. And unfortunately, the proposed development is going to permanently change the nature of this community, and that's why we feel so strongly about it. So, on October 19th, I attended the community meeting for this project, and the developer promised to be responsive to our concerns and meet with us. We asked for several adjustments to the plan at the meeting and in emails in the following weeks. We received no response until the plan was submitted with no modifications. Here's some of our major concerns. First, we strongly oppose extending Franconia Way. This is currently a dead-end street with minimal traffic. In addition to the 14 new homes, the developer has already openly expressed an interest and desire to buy adjoining properties. And as you can see in the plan, that's clearly the intent with the berm at the end of the street. This is gonna change our quiet, dead-end street into a major through-street, significantly altering the community, reducing existing property values, creating dangers to drivers, pedestrians, and children. The intersection of Franconia Way and Apex Barbecue is already hazardous. There's only about 150 feet of visibility due to road grade and curve, and at 45 miles an hour, that's less than 2.3 seconds of driver response time. It's dangerous for left turns and pedestrians crossing from Apex Nature Park, and adding more left turn traffic to this road will only increase that. We asked for the developer to instead build a new connection to Apex Barbecue on the, on the, on his property and to leave Franconia Way as is. In correspondence, the developer claimed that there was conflicting feedback about this at the community meeting. That's a mischaracterization. One individual incorrectly believed this would make nearby Brass Town Lane into an intersection. I assure you, there is unanimous approval in our neighborhood. We do not want Franconia Way extended. Safety and current residents' concerns must take priority over developer profitability. Secondly, the tree buffer between existing homes is insufficient, does not capture many of the major trees in the space, and creates privacy concerns because of elevation differences. We're asking for an additional 10 feet of buffer next to the existing adjoining homes to lessen the impacts on drainage and privacy. Finally, lack of trust is another reason I must ask you to vote no. The developer offered to meet us anywhere and anytime to discuss our concerns. He was then unresponsive and made no alterations. At the meeting, the developer claimed the town would not allow him to build a new connection to Apex Barbecue. After I provided some counterexamples on Apex Barbecue, he shifted his response to, "I'm allowed to, but not required to." This is not how you build trust between an established neighborhood and a developer. I'm very disappointed to have to be here to ask you to vote no on this development. As I stated in my emails to the developer, we are not against redevelopment on principle. We simply want reasonable compromises to reduce the negative impacts to existing residents. We extended an offer to work with him on a plan so we could all, we could all agree to, and we heard nothing. In my view, the question before you is, does this plan make Apex better for residents? And is it done in partnership between the developer and the existing community? In my view, the answer to that question is a clear no. I ask you to vote no on this proposal and, and instruct the developer to work with us on a plan we can all be proud of together. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Vila. Mr. Mahaffey?
I'm Terry Mahaffey, I live at 109 Terrace Unit Court. I own one of the properties adjacent to the western edge of the planned development, and that was pretty good. So I'm not sure if I have much to add, but I do concur with everything that my, my friend and neighbor said. I'd like to point on the map, between my property and the proposed development, there's an elevation difference which I found troublesome, so I was asking for the, the additional buffer. In addition, the 20 feet proposed actually doesn't capture all of the old growth trees in that area. If you see on the western edge, it's pretty thin, but that's, that's more than 20 feet of trees. Another 10 feet, I think, would actually capture every tree in that area. In addition, address the property concern of, of the lot there, looking down into, into my property. With regards to the character of the proposed subdivision, we're concerned it doesn't actually match what we have currently in Belacasa, it's kind of troublesome. The average is, I think, we just worked out .27 whatnot. There's a lot of lots there that are, that are much below that, that don't meet the character of what we have. It's concerning. But my major concern actually comes back to the intersection of Evans, Franconia Evans and Apex Barbecue. If you look at the map, you'll see the blind corner that was mentioned. That's, that's problematic today for turning out of there, and adding additional homes to this street doesn't seem like a very wise choice. When I initially saw that there was a subdivision coming, I assumed that this would just extend Franconia or have another entrance to Apex Barbecue. If there's concerns about too many answers nearby, it would probably be better to close Franconia at Evans Road and have another one, because if you look at where the property meets Apex Barbecue, it's flat, you can see both ways in a long direction, that would be fine. And just in the general context of where we are in Apex in this area, Apex Barbecue is a road clearly not designed for the traffic that it's having today. And as more traffic comes online down Evans Road, we got a bunch of developments coming up in the next year or two, it's, it's gonna get worse, and a lot needs to happen on that road. And if I was, I would ask the council to look closely at any development which is gonna use Apex Barbecue as the major feeder street into town. It's, it'll be problematic, I think, and, and none of this has to do with this planned subdivision, of course, but I, I think Apex Barbecue needs to have a speed limit lowered, we need to, you know, fix the bridge death we got down there, and something has to be done with this intersection. So I'd ask the council to vote no on this proposal. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mahaffey. That concludes the public hearing from our sign-up sheet. As I usually do, I'll ask the applicant if he wishes to add any final comments based on any of the public hearing that has been presented tonight.
I'm a, I'm a bit confused about the lack of communication felt from me to anybody else. I mean, even during the time that we were sitting here just now, I put up a conversation between Mr. Mahaffey and myself, that's eight or nine emails back and forth, pretty open discussion. You know, I was in contact with Ms. Jenny Ross this past week, Mike Wolgin, who's also a Realtor in the area, has, he and I have been texting and communicating about the project, asking me questions. I've shared the plan to everybody who's asked me for it. So I've been, if somebody has reached out to me, I've been more than willing to reach back out to them. And, you know, I'm sure Mr. Mahaffey would, you know, acknowledge as well. I mean, we can read the emails if we'd like, but, you know, that, that has been the case. I've definitely not been trying to keep anything from anybody. There's even a, a lot that is gonna gain benefit from this because there's a .1 acre turnaround right now at Franconia, and I, you know, actually, once I found out that it's, the way that's written into the plan, it's being deeded back to his property, so I'd, you know, very eagerly picked up the phone and made sure to make that call and let him know that, you know, by me extending the road, his property's gonna increase by .1 acres. And, you know, that, that's just the, kind of the way that I've conducted myself with this. I'm kind of confused as to the lack of communication.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
May I ask, if we're allowed to ask any more questions?
Since he is the applicant, but let's keep it brief, 'cause we really need to deliberate at this point.
I agree. My, my quick question was, what, what is the problem, as you see it, and maybe it's a staff question, with connecting to Apex Barbecue Road? I, I can personally see that it should be connected to both, possibly.
Maybe, let's let staff address that, since that would be, I think, a traffic-related or planning question.
I have one question.
Okay, for Mr. Smith?
Correct.
Okay.
So, about.
We'll come back to that.
About the concerns with the extra 10-foot buffer added on, as Mr. Mahaffey was saying, would you be willing to put that extra 10-foot there?
I will be willing to look into it, I'm not sure that I have the room in the project. But I, I will certainly look into it. Uh, I mean, we're preserving everything that's there and improving upon what's there.
All right.
As it stands today.
All right, thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
So at this time, let me refer back to Councilman Jensen's question, which I think would be appropriately answered by staff. I know Russell's not here, but do you feel confident?
When, when I think, um, with Russell, there was some concerns about site distance.
Yes.
And not, he would rather see a connection further down Apex Barbecue Road.
And this was Russell?
Yes.
Our traffic?
Yes.
Engineer, okay. All right.
It would be better to have a connection.
Away from that blind corner.
Yeah, away from the corner, the turn right here.
Okay, what's, what's the total number of houses with these 14, I guess?
It would be 42.
It's 42, so if they added eight more, which is what would happen, they would have to have a connection.
It would have to have a connection.
Anybody doing that would have to have a connection.
But that connection would not be there, it would be further down.
Yes.
Can you tell me the status of any traffic light situation at the, that intersection, if any?
I, I don't have that information for you.
But I think typically, if staff wishes to ask DOT for a traffic count, we certainly could do something like that, whenever we feel like it's appropriate. The DOT, this would be a DOT road, DOT signalization, so they would come out and do a count, and if it warrants intersection signaling, then that would get on the list.
Okay.
Yeah.
I can say, probably back in 2014, our neighborhood asked for more than just blind curb sides, we asked for the speed limit to be reduced when it was only a few people in the neighborhood, in the original side, or the other sides, and we, DOT would not, they came and reviewed it, but would not do that, so that would probably have to be another driving audit or whatever it's called, but that was asked for a while ago.
Okay.
And it's hard to even get across, just even go straight. It's, it's not good.
All right, any other questions for staff, for Liz while she's up?
I do.
Okay.
Liz, when is the, I know there's been a discussion lately of the, the bridge further to the east on Barbecue Road being repaired, upgraded, fixed. What's the timeline on that, do you know?
I don't have that information for you.
Last I remember, it's at least a year from now, but it's probably 2019, I think the last schedule was.
From what I remember.
For the Apex Barbecue Bridge. Does that sound right, Mr. Town Manager?
I will verify that while we're sitting here. I believe DOT accelerated that.
Recently?
So I'll, I have that information, it's been shared with the council, but I'll, I'll verify, but yeah, that's gonna be a complete, not just a modification, it's a complete replacement of the bridge, new, kind of new geometry of the road, it'll elevate the bridge, widen it, pedestrian accommodation on both sides, and a bike lane. So it's gonna significantly improve the safety of the bridge. But I'll get that date for you before we leave this meeting.
All right, thank you.
Liz, do you know the average lot size of the homes on Franconia Ways right now?
I don't have the average. So, in low-density, the minimum is 10,000 square feet, and the original Belacasa was rezoned to low-density as well. Um, and, and I mean, there's probably, there's a minimum, but most of those lots are larger than that, so, um, I don't have that specific number for you.
And this, this proposal here, I'm assuming the, the houses on the smaller lots are at least a minimum 10,000?
Yes, the minimum would be 10,000. And then I think the applicant said the average would be 12,000. would be 12,000.
If they extended the road, I would expect, and I know you're not Russell, but the intersection, the new intersection with Apex Barbecue Road, I would expect would be across from the one that's in the south side and to-
That would be ideal.
That would be the right place to put it, I would think, rather than have more cuts. Is that correct?
In my conversation with him, that's what was discussed.
Thank you.
Liz, from your guys', from staff's, for a view of the, the west-side buffer that's proposed, is your guys' understanding that that will be undisturbed?
So, a ten-foot type B buffer is required under the master subdivision that's currently under review. He has an additional ten feet of RCA.
So it's a-
So it would be a total of 20.
Go ahead.
I was just going to say, so there, the plan is to leave everything that's there in place?
Yes, he's also doing stage grading, so there would be tree protection fencing for all of this.
For everything else outside of the-
Yes. Instead of mass grading, he is proposing stage grading.
I'm sorry?
He's proposing stage grading with the master subdivision, so he has tree protection for every tree except where the road is going in.
And that goes into the HOA, or, I don't understand.
It would go, there's tree protection around all the trees on the lot. So, when the develop, or builder would go in and select trees to clear for the house.
Okay.
Any other questions for staff? All right, thank you, Liz. In case I didn't do it earlier, I'll close the public hearing or refer the matter back to council for discussion leading to a possible motion.
So, I'll go ahead and start, that's okay. One of the things I like about it is it doesn't not have a huge impact as far as the number of homes, but there are a few things that I don't like about it. I would say that the, the Franconia Way doing that, I think that's not, I don't think that's the way to go either. I would prefer Apex Barbecue Road, but then again, Apex Barbecue Road, the condition and the character of that road needs, has some issues. And so, for me, it's a safety, the nature of the road issue that we, that we're looking at, the location for right now, the timing with the bridge, you know, and the walking path, or maybe closer up, maybe I could see that, but, and there, there is a safety issue with that new, with that intersection. Was asked about the buffer, and that wasn't offered tonight. It seems that the issue with elevations, if we have people coming in over and looking down on houses that are already there, you know, we, we need to be looking at how newer projects are impacting people that are already here. And so, I guess the biggest disappointment for me right now is that, the neighbors aren't saying no to the development, they're saying no because they felt like they haven't been heard. And so, for those reasons, unless there's, and, you know, ways people can be heard, do a break or something tonight, I won't be able to support this project at this time.
I personally, kind of, am excited to see this. This is something we haven't seen, at least in my two years sitting up here, an average of 12,000 square foot on a lot is something I think that we've really been pushing for here. So I appreciate the efforts of the developer, the stage grading, we have not seen that, we haven't seen, I don't know if we've ever seen, in my, again, in my short time up here, somebody coming to not clear out all the trees, so I appreciate the thoughtful development of this site here. I like the buffer along Barbecue Road and the berm, you know, and shading that, we've talked about it at great lengths up here, not driving down roads and looking in the backs of, of houses, so I appreciate the effort that's been done on that. So I, I like this project, I think this is a, a good addition here on Barbecue Road and Franconia Way.
So I've, I've visited Belacasa several times with some, some friends. It's a beautiful neighborhood, and when I saw this plan, low, low density, I was, I thought it was about as, as good as we can get as far as residential development in this area, and I think the view from the Apex Barbecue will be improved, actually, you know, looking at kind of a farm, a little bit kind of rundown farm area, and I think with the, the large RCA and the buffers along Apex Barbecue, it'll be, it'll be improved, actually, which is kind of unusual for a development. I don't like the idea of that road coming out there on Apex Barbecue, because I, I drive on Apex Barbecue near my neighborhood, and more roads there are, and cut-throughs, the worse it is. So I think that we need to fix that intersection maybe on Franconia, but I don't like the idea of a cut-through that close to another one, and so I think it's best to minimize those, as far as I, as far as, in my opinion, about driving around and, and near my neighborhood too. So, I think, I intend to approve, but I just think it's, I'm just glad that the first major development that we're seeing is not, is about as low-impact as, as I can imagine a six-acre development being.
All right, thank you.
Well, I pretty well echo those statements. You know, when I first looked at this, I thought, well, you know, understood that the neighborhood wanted to have the extra road through, but you can't, to look at it from a 30,000-foot elevation, we can't stick, as you said, another connection to Apex Barbecue Road, and the logical one is to move it over. Now, we'll be adding another 50% more houses, which will load that cul-de-sac some for a while. But once, if, if this does develop beyond this, there will be a, there will be a connection, so that will offload it at that point, if there is more development to the east, if you look at it from that point of view, because there will be a connected, connection to Apex Barbecue Road. The other thing, I did not know, or I did not remember, that Apex Barbecue Road is 45 miles per hour speed limit. I think we need to, as a council or something, change that, because, I mean, I try to get out onto Old Raleigh Road, which is 45 miles an hour from mine, and there's wide section there, and it gets to be kind of interesting sometimes, so I, I do favor this, I think it's, there's going to be something going in there. I think that what has been proposed is probably as lightweight as one could expect, considering the cost of properties.
All right, thank you, Councilman. Anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm hearing concerns from the people that are living close by, and with Mr. Vila, you know, basically speaking for, you know, almost everyone there, and giving their concerns, and Mr. Mahaffey letting us know his concerns, I do, I do feel like there are some things that are not addressed that do need to be addressed. I do like the, the low-impact development, I think that's great. I think your plan to conserve as many trees as possible is wonderful, I would love to see more of that from our developers. And the low-density as well, kind of fitting in with what's already there, I think that would be wonderful. But I am, I am pretty concerned that the people that live there don't feel like they've been addressed, so I'm going to say that's going to be my biggest thing, and I'm going to have to say no right now.
All right, since everyone's had a moment to comment, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we can approve.
All right, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Are we, a motion and a second to approve? Discussion on the motion? I think everybody's had a comment. Do you have something?
Yeah, so it's, I think this is going to go, and so I hope that, that you all, as the applicant, will then reach out, because even when you stated that you had reached out to Mr. Mahaffey, but you didn't say you reached out to Mr. Vila, and he was the one that made that, so-
I'm sorry, I've never received any-
Okay, okay, but, but, okay, so, so I just-
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
So, what I hope is that I don't have to hear that, you know, I want, folks' voices should be embedded in our policymaking, and they should feel heard, even if they are disappointed, people should feel heard. So I hope that that happens, I, I want that to be, I would love it to be a condition of disapproval, that people do get heard in this process. And that we investigate the speed limit again.
Yep.
Well, not again, but, I wasn't on the council at the time.
Yep, I've got a note on that. All right, everybody okay with calling for the vote? All right, all in favor? Pardon?
Real quick, one of the other things that I know that, I was not aware of previously, was stubs, you know, making sure that you understand that if there are stubs in a neighborhood, it is assumed that that will continue at some point, so, instead of being a stopping point, just as an informational piece.
All right, thank you. Apologize, it's me to cut you off.
That's right.
All in favor of this motion to approve indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say no.
No.
All right, I counted three in favor, two against, so that motion passes, public hearing number three is concluded. I appreciate everybody being out here, Mr. Smith and Mr. Vila, I hope you guys will connect after this and figure out how to connect, communicate.
Mr. Mayor, just for the point of information for council, the, the original plan for the Barbecue Road Bridge was to let the contract in December of 2018. Been able to convince them that it's a little higher priority, so they will be letting that contract in May of this year, so we shaved off a few months.
All right, great. And while everybody's breaking for a second, let me just thank the Weebalos for making it an hour and 20 minutes, good job, y'all. That's, that's a new Boy Scout record for this year. I'll, we'll pause for just a moment, let the room clear. Drew, how long do you, will it take to build that bridge? Do you have any idea?
Based on the experience with Kelly Road, it could be three or four years. I, I don't know. I think they were looking at 12 to 18.